Welcome, everybody, tonight. And I'd like to thank Pastor Ray Mondregan for being here. And if you would come and help us get ready for our meeting with an invocation, please.
Let us pray. God of all creation, we give you thanks for the gift of life. We give you thanks for the opportunity we have to be in this world. Thank you for the opportunity to serve in areas of leadership, guiding, offering hope, comfort, ways to improve living conditions here for the area of Perry that it might prosper and all the families that live in the city and beyond in the surrounding areas, all the persons that come through the town, the city, the visitors, those that receive services with their restaurants, gas stations, recharge in areas. We also pray for the farmers, those that work the fields, that produce the goods that come to our tables and are even shared beyond the state of Michigan and beyond the United States. Thank you for providing everything that is needed, rain, snow, oxygen, wind, everything that needed for our living here on this planet. We give you thanks, and we glorify your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming tonight. Steve replied and said, "Thanks for the reminder." We'll give him a few minutes. Fortunately, he's not very far away. While we're waiting for Steve, I'll just say thank you to all of you for your prayers and thoughts for my brother. He did get admitted to the inpatient rehab unit at the U of yesterday, and he had two occupational therapy sessions and two physical therapy sessions and one practice radiation session today. He was pretty tired by tonight.
I was gonna say, that's...
That was a lot. But so his aggressive get you better is underway. I'm amazed by the control that they have of his shunt that they put in to get the fluid hydro off his brain. It's internal. Emergently, it was external, but now it's all inside. But if from his symptoms, they decide he needs more draining or less draining, they just take this magnet thing and do this behind his head, and it changes it. Pretty slick.
Amazing.
So that's nice.
It's amazing through the years what's happened with medicine.
Sooner or later, they'll get it right.
Yeah, sooner. Just be half robotic by the time they come to medicine.
I love the ones from strawberry.
Oh, you're cured.
I like that, where they just wave it over. No needles, no howies. Well, I guess we'll go ahead and start. I hope Steve's on the way. We'll call the meeting to order 7:01 and invite you all to join me in the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, would you please take role?
Mike Connell. Chad Fuller. Mindy Galabine. Here. Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace. Mayor Suhana.
Here.
Call's account board except Mike Connell and maybe Steve Wallace.
Mike had let me know ahead of time that he was going to be gone tonight, so. Steve, what we got?
Just a tiny little hint.
Okay. Looking now for approval of the agenda for tonight?
Sorry. I move that the agenda be adopted at this point.
We have a motion from Chad seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And now looking for reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, approve the minutes from the March 2nd, 2023 regular meeting.
We have a motion from Larry seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now we'll move into our pre-approved reports and presentations. And we have the chair of our CISA committee and representative for the city of Perry. And Bob Porter also represents the city of Perry on that committee, but I believe Tim is going to be doing a presentation.
I am, thank you. I will say. That's beyond my technical ability. If I push this button, it works, and that's what I do.
Well, it's supposed to work, right?
I push the buttons and it still doesn't work.
I don't see the proper tool. There's not a hammer or duct tape, so.
Mindy and I were trying to do a Zoom meeting today, a webinar. We had to call Devin.
You should be close, because it might be something that's adjusting than that. I don't know that for sure, but.
It is what it's, it's the screen.
It's something in the, it's in the program, it's not on that.
It's, it's in the program, which I fixed it before. I just don't know his laptop enough to go right to it.
Hopefully, it won't come anywhere. Well, you guys got a copy. We'll get the gist of it, right?
Yeah, check this program.
Slide seven?
Yes. Okay, now I'll take it to the side. See.
We can just do it like that, I guess. That's not the presentation mode, and that'll really be...
But now they can see you.
Yeah, that's fine. You all have a copy as well.
Would you, you can just delay for two more seconds.
I can.
Steve, get right down and get this...
I absolutely can.
Hi, Steve.
Oh.
Oh, I think I see it right down in that corner. See right there? Looks like that's the size.
That's right.
So if that Steve's there, and you go back to your...
Yeah, so I can't.
So it's not there on that one. Okay. Well, I'm sorry.
It's all right, we'll make it.
All right, I've been told that people out in the audience, it's hard for them to see. Is it okay if...
That's better.
Everybody can see.
Are you good, Chad? You're kind of in the dark spot.
Go.
Ready, Steve? All right, we're ready.
I'm good to go.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, well, thanks again. Seems like I was just here talking fire department stuff in January, I believe it was. We did an update. Today's visit is a little bit the same and different in a note. We're gonna talk about some of the same stuff, but really, the true meaning of today's meeting is talking about an assessment increase for the ambulance. The last time we were here, we talked about both fire and ambulance. Tonight's really talking about the ambulance. They're two separate financial entities with assessment, okay? So our board has been struggling for the last couple of months trying to come up with the method for making this all happen. I think we got a very lengthy meeting this last month into the late hours of the night trying to decide how to do this and get it done. And we came up with what we thought would be the best, and we're here to present it today. So what I want to do first is just start out with a little bit about us, which we did talk about again in the last January. But CESA was formed in 2004 when the former ambulance service was on the way out. We began our EMS operations, actually, oh, that's not something we did, in January 2005. At that time, it was a smaller board. It was only the local, just a couple entities, City of Perry, Perry Village, I'm sorry, the Village of Morris, Perry Township, I think Antrim Township, and maybe one other. We've since increased to now over 200 square miles, and that includes 11, all are part of 11 municipalities, so pretty big area of coverage for our EMS system. We respond to approximately 2,000 calls, ambulance calls, in a year. We currently staff 18 full-time International Association Firefighter Locals, 5360 members. That was a union that was formed here back in 2022, the early months of 2022. We went through a negotiation, ratified the contract in May, I believe it was signed June 1st. We, all those 18 full-time people, we have nine ALS paramedics and nine EMTs, or Emergency Medical Technicians, okay? They run three, three different shifts, red, blue, green, a paramedic and an EMT on each ambulance for those three stations, so six per day, 18 on the three shifts. That's how it works. Early in '22, Chief Hubbard gathered a group of individuals consisting of the management team, union members, and paid-on-call or volunteer members. I guess volunteer is not the right word, but just paid-on-call firefighters. They came up with what we call our core commitments, their vision statement, mission statement, vision statement, and core values. I'd like to read them because they're very proud of this and upholding this, this level of service. So our mission is, Perry Area Fire Rescue is committed to providing the highest level of customer service in our community through safe and rapid response to all fires, EMS, and hazardous incidents, to save lives, protect property, and preserve the environment. We will accomplish that through our vision, and that Perry Area Fire Rescue will uphold this mission by promoting safety and maintaining a well-equipped, highly-trained, motivated team of professional firefighters and EMS personnel, while promoting fire prevention and public safety education programs. We will continually strive to meet the changing needs of our community by providing a modern, progressive, and safe department. We will accomplish this by maintaining the highest degree of readiness and focus on professional development and training of all personnel. And then they've selected several words for their core values, courage, respect, dedication, compassion, trust, and integrity. So I think a strong, strong goal for them to push forward for this professional service, and I think they do well at it. The current services we provide are our 24/7/365 ALS/BLS transport service. We operate and staff three ALS licensed ambulances with one on backup, and then we also have one MFR vehicle, which is a medical first responder vehicle. We operate out of four stations, the city of Perry, of course, being one ALS rig. Station two operates out of the Village of Morris, that operates an MFR vehicle. Station three in the city of Duran, another ALS ambulance. Station four, Vernon Township, another ALS ambulance. And between those three or four, I'm sorry, four stations, we have serviced approximately 11,000 units. Units are described as a single-family household. There's other foremothers that get in there when we talk about businesses and how many employees a business has as to how many units they might be paying. Also, if you have any questions, go ahead and stop me when, when we're thinking about it, just so we don't forget. Very informative here, so. Our history is that when we took over 4PMSA, at that time, they were charging $45 a household, and that's what we opted to charge as well. So we started that assessment at $45 per household per year in 2005. We were fortunate to be able to maintain that $45 a household for 15 years until 2020. In 2020, there was, this is pre-COVID, started discussion in 2019, and in 2020, we recognized that there was going to be some shortfalls in the budget, and they opted to increase at that time to $65 per household per year, which is still only $5.42 a month, $1.25 a week, or $0.18 a day. So a very small amount to ensure that we're gonna provide that coverage, 365, 747. So you can see the chart that we recognized in the 2021 area, where you see the red line, which is our revenue, start to fall below our projected, or I'm sorry, our expenses, expenses. Those are actual numbers. Obviously, past '22 is all trending or projected numbers, right? It's all based on what we've seen coming down the pipe with the economy. Our forecast, of course, then, is that we understand that assessment increase is necessary to compensate for the burden of rising costs due to post-COVID inflation in the current economy. And then we put just several examples of things that we've experienced since the 2020 timeframe and post, well, actually, some of it was during COVID and then post-COVID discussions. But so wages and benefits, one of the things with that is that we recognized in 2020, 2021, there was problems with recruitment and retention, and that's really what kind of drove the union as well. So the union opted in 2021, late 2021, to try and bring some of that stuff up to get us to the level where we were kind of equal to or at least close to other area agencies so that we didn't lose people to these agencies. So our wages increased by 8%, roughly. And that, of course, when wages go up, retirement goes up, as well as medical benefits and such. Apparatus, we purchased our last apparatus ambulance in 2019 that cost $156,000. We quoted one this year, it was $257,000, so a 65% increase, and we don't expect that to go down in the future.
And that was a used one, right?
No, we did opt to buy a used one, which we'll talk about later in the slideshow. So this was one, we should have purchased one. Right now, we have a 2012, two 2016s, and a 2019. Those were our four ALS rigs. The 2012 is well over a couple hundred thousand miles on it, and that's at a time when you start looking at new ones, so we should have been replacing that last year. Unfortunately, as you saw in the chart, we didn't have money in the budget. Matter of fact, we used to put a lot of money into a replacement fund so that we could purchase an ambulance and pay cash for it. But as we saw the numbers start to increase from the pay, or I'm sorry, the income was lower than the revenue, I'm sorry, expenses, then we couldn't even put money in that fund, let alone buying other ambulances. So as we move through and looking at now, as Sue said, we just did purchase a used one in hopes of trying to alleviate some of this budget constraints, and we'll talk about that a little bit. So on the equipment we buy, power cot, that's a, basically a cot that has a power lift on it to eliminate stress and strain on our employees, eliminate injuries from lifting. So in 2017, we bought one, it was $16,000. 2023, we bought another one, and I'm sorry, we quoted another one, and it was $22,000, so an increase of 20%. We had a heart monitor purchased in 2021, it was $25,000. We put one on a quote together, and we come, they sent it at $30,000, so we got a 20% increase. And then, of course, the other operating expenses are the same thing as you guys experience, and we all do, every, it fuels up, right? Insurances are up, maintenance of everything is up, so we recognize a lot of 15% increase in our operating expenses. So with all that said, this year, we're gonna be tight in 2023. If we do, are successful in this campaign to increase the household assessment, it wouldn't even start taking money until 2024. So as we look down the road in our projected income of 2024, or a percent of budget versus income, we're looking at an income of $1,683,000 and expenditures roughly around $1.9 million. So we've got a little over $200,000 of a shortcut in that year if we don't do something. So that's why we're here, to try and do something to get this thing back up.
$300,000 shortfall if we stay status quo.
Yes, yes, exactly.
And if I'm understanding right, the meanings that I've attended CESA, um, a lot of the equipment that ha, it has to be replaced.
Yes.
Even if it's working.
Yep.
You have to continually upgrade.
Yes.
To certain standards, and you don't, you don't have a choice in that.
That's right. Unfortunately, yeah, sometimes it's a governmental issue. This last year, we had to purchase all new monitors, the monitors that we had when we talked about the $30,000 monitor, better replace all of them because they were all becoming obsolete.
I mean, it's to all of our benefit.
Yes.
That we have the better equipment, but it ties your hands.
Yes, you're forced.
Yeah, you have, you have to provide those.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what we would get, this is where we need to try and figure out how we're gonna compensate for the shortcut in 2024. So as I said, the board met this last month, and we had a lengthy discussion, lots of discussion. We had an interactive slide presentation that we moved my numbers around, and we did vote to increase to $110 per household per year for the assessment. Now, that's an increase of $45 over what you're currently paying, or your taxpayers are paying. So that increase would be $3.75 a month, $0.87 a week, or $0.12 a day. So again, it seems like a small number, and I know that when we talk about taxes and raising things, assessments, nobody gets excited about that. But really, you know, understanding the ambulance service and what we provide, I think that's a small amount to actually look at as an increase. And you can see by the line we've just added, the blue line, this is where we go up, and so now we're, you know, at a comfortable level above what we have projected for expenditures here, so that gets us where we think.
Tim, can you tell me where those two lines intersect again in your forecast?
Okay, so.
Reading the blue?
Yeah, here's another thing. So this forecast right here, actually, the blue line shows that 110 increase, or $45 increase up to 110, and then from there, there will have to be a percentage, a small percentage increase every year. If you don't do a percentage increase, if you just do the 110, it comes down before 2027, you're back below your expenditures, forecast expenditures, okay? So I think this right here is set at 5%, a 5% increase each year keeps you above at a level which we feel will be comfortable to stay above our expenditures. So to answer your question, if we didn't, if we just went for the 110 and know it increased each year, then we would probably fall below the line in 2027, which was what a lot of discussion that took place, of maybe we should try to go for a higher number. The board agreed on, what, 10? I think the one, there was a $120 value thrown out there a little bit, maybe even considering higher.
Your, your question, Steve, is where it intersects, is approximately October.
Yeah.
August, October, somewhere in there. So we're gonna run a deficit until that point.
Oh, you're talking about if we didn't get the increase?
No, he's wanting to know where it actually hit, where the, where your proposed revenue and the actual expenditures meet. So that line is in 2023?
After the 110. After, okay, yeah.
Oh, right. As long as it comes in, yes, because you saw on the last slide, it's gonna be the opposite.
So, okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, um, there was a lot of struggling among the board members on how much to increase it.
Yes.
I mean, nobody wants increases.
Right.
And I, I think what you ended up coming up with was the minimum that you could get by.
I do agree with that. We had several people, myself included, felt this number should be a little higher.
And myself...
But I'm only one vote on the board, and then the board decided 110 was the number, and we'll try to work with that. The whole goal here is to not come back to you in three, four years and say, oops, we screwed up, we gotta be at 150, right? Now, just as a side note, there are agencies around us that are at that. There's one just to the west of us, it's $187 a household. There's one to the north of us, it's just under $200 a household. So we're not out of line by raising it. We tried to do the best we could and still feel comfortable with what the budget, you know, with the taxpayers will allow us to move to, so.
It was a big struggle.
Yes.
I asked this question at the meeting that I attended, and I'll ask it again in the presence of our council members. What happens if the other municipalities do not pass this?
Yeah, this isn't all or none. Every single one of the entities has to come on board. If one of them doesn't, then what that means is they would obviously fall out and try to find another service for their area. We aren't going away, but what it means for the others to stay in is that another number has to come, you know, be decided on, right? So if one or multiple people fell out, then you have to take a look at how many households would that serve then? How much is that income versus what we would have, you know, as expenses? And then we'd have to come up with a new number, which no one wants to do. We'd like to have everybody come on board, but good point, it isn't all or none. So one of the things that I just wanted to point out, of things that we've done as from CESA and Perry Area Fire Rescue, is that we've tried to take on some other cost savings on our own, right, to try and get things down a little bit. One of the things, last year, we received a grant for $161,000. That was an EMS grant that paid for a number of things, some equipment, some training, and we did, you could, some of that stuff, some computer systems that we had to...
Monitor.
Yeah, monitors for the stations to talk about for runs when it comes in. Run comes in, it pops up on the monitor, a map, and all of these things.
Tells you who's, tells you who's responding, who's coming to the station for calls. It's called I am responding, we have it all on our phone, so when dispatch tones us out, we get everything, and then it gives us a description. The map system sometimes works, but that's, that's something different. But, um, but on there, you can click responding to station one, responding to station two, or it'll say, you know, not available. You can change your, your locations, or you can change your shift, like, like me. If I'm at work, I'll just put myself unavailable, and then it'll say, and I just type in work. So it's a good...
It's a really good program.
Yeah.
And that really crosses a line into fire too, a little bit, but it's for the EMS system as well. So we bought that system, we bought some computers so that the guys can, you know, talk on ships and do training together. Bought some monitor, or a monitor, and I think a power cot, power load, and some various things for the ambulance service.
Did we get a stair lift, too?
Yeah, stair chair, yep, so there was a number of things. The other thing that we also are doing now is, was called group purchasing, and that actually is kind of in line with the fourth one now, the local agencies. They're the same in a way in that we are jumping on board with a bunch of entities to do it, to save costs, cost savings, right? The group purchasing was a purchase where we talked about the stair chair, as mentioned, and then another heart monitor. We got 25% off the price for doing that with these other agencies. The local agencies for cost savings is that we joined on with the Lansing Group in our medical supplies, so that gauzes and, you know, syringes and all those things that we use in the, in the back of the ambulance, we got then with a 50% savings. So we're not just out here just trying to run the bills up in hopes that everybody just accepts and pays what the, you know, we're asking. We're doing our own, trying to cut down things. The middle one that I skipped over was used equipment, which is what Sue mentioned. Our last meeting, we authorized to purchase a, instead of a $257,000 ambulance, whoops, we bought a $75,000, gently used, I'll say. It had only like 70,000 miles on it. They did a couple small repairs to it, and we're expected to go pick that up very quickly. They did a couple small repairs to it, and we're expected to go pick that up very quickly. So getting new, new ambulance with low miles in, in the fleet rather than expenditure of $257,000, so. And then the other thing we did this last month, or maybe the month before, is that we extended our efforts of collection. Now, one thing you remember that when we bill, we may bill $850, $900 for an EMS call. If the insurance company only pays 500 or 560, that balance gets written off to all of you that pay the $65 a household. We don't go after you for anything, okay? So we have to write that off. If you're outside our area and don't pay that money, then we do go after you. We have a collection service where we try to collect that money. So what we do in that effort is that we were just sending out three bills, and if they refuse to pay it, then we just basically vote it off. Now we've gone to a fourth billing where we're offering kind of like a discounted, paid by this date, you get a 50% savings, just trying to collect some more money back in. So, you know, our write offs, I think, are worth $90,000, I think, last year.
$87,000 in the last fiscal year.
It's a tough thing to, to vote yes on, so you're writing off a whole bunch of money in a business, but it's just what we do because we don't charge our taxpayers an extra, you know, with their insurance payments, so. So what we have done though is just went out and extended that collection after one more time, just trying to get a little, just a little bit back, and so again, trying to bring more money back into the budget, so. So those are some things we're doing just to try and help out. I think in closing, I think I got one more slide here. Of course, questions? Remember, like we said, it's an all or nothing, right? So we're trying to get everybody on board with this. We hope that you will support us in our efforts, and of course, within your organization and beyond your city. So thanks for everything that you've done so far, and thanks for in advance for what you might do for us in the future. And then, of course, there's my number and Chief Hubbard's number. If you have any additional questions, when you talk to people, or if you want more input or more feedback, just let us know, and we'll, we'll get you everything that we can get. Okay? Any other questions?
Anybody have questions for Tim?
Great overview. Tim, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you for that, so, it was much nicer.
Didn't I tell you everything else?
Luck would happen, that's what happens. Thank you.
Maybe you could come sit down before you hurt yourself more. Please come and sit down. Okay. Now we'll move on to, well, let me, let me first say, is there any discussion that council wants to have in regard to Tim's presentation tonight?
I, I just, they have my full support. I know paying more money is hard, but I think it would be even harder if we didn't have our service.
Devin, could you just remind council what the process is?
Sure. To do a new special assessment, assessment district, we'll have to do it all again. And I went through all the procedures, the public hearings, and it's approximately two and a half to three months. Safer to say three months because that allows some time if we're still waiting for the assessor to catch up with the information we need, or the city attorney.
In order to have a special assessment and create a new district, we have to have some open meetings, special meetings where the public can attend and ask any questions. I'm sure at that point, we might ask Tim to come back and do the presentation again. And then it does not, because it is a special assessment, it does not go to a vote. It then is the council's decision based on the out, the information we get from residents during the public hearing. So any questions about that?
No, I guess we need to probably have Tim back and share with everybody.
Absolutely.
Because I know that we had some concerns when we raised it last time, and it was just lack of understanding.
Yes. And I think a letter explaining should go out prior to the public meeting or the public hearing. Last time we had the special assessment, the biggest complaint received from residents was that we weren't forthcoming with more information and explaining it more. So we would definitely want to get a letter out to everybody explaining what it means and what it does and so forth. So, yeah, keeping all the information out there to the public that we can.
I have one comment to that. So our special assessment districts go on the July 1st taxes. This is for Tim, information for you. And Bob, so I would advise, if there's any hiccups, if there's any cancellations of council, I would start, if it's all an agreement, to go forward in November. And in November, the simple task is going to be, is that you're going to agree to go forward, and the mayor is going to go to the assessor and begin the process. I mean, it starts with, the mayor calls the assessor to create plans and estimates for the special assessment district. So keep that in mind if we do go forward. That, that leaves a breathing room of this, three months and the two public hearings I have to do.
Okay. We'll move on in the agenda then to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight for a public comment? We'll say hello, John.
Hello.
Hello. Welcome back from Florida.
Thank you.
Yeah. Seeing no public comment, we'll move to communications. Devin, do you have some?
I have a couple. One, I want to make sure that council has received the letter of the full disclosure from Smith Sandgravel, from Shirley Smith. Yes? She's required to do that annually. And next, I have a letter of resignation. On 3/10/2023, I, Leon Bunning, resign my position as electrical inspector and plan retiring as of March 30th, 2023. It has been my pleasure serving the city of Perry. Leon Bunning. And Rob, our building inspector, mentioned that he's been here, Leon has been here as long as Rob, which was in 2003, and wanted to kind of give him a thank you of the retirement. So I wanted you guys to be able to see what he is getting, so you should have got a copy of the certificate. Yep. That's all I have, Mr. M.
Okay. In regard to mayor reports, disappointed, but I have to say that now we have a opening on the I-69 International Trade Corridor Group again. Randy Coffey had said he would serve on that, but then some responsibilities of his changed at work, and he found that he wasn't going to have the time to do that. So we're looking for someone to represent the city on that corridor group. They do meet every other month in Flint at Bishop Airport. This can be a city resident, or it can be a business owner who owns a business in the city but is not a resident in the city. So if you would like more information on that, we have information posted on our website. There is an application to fill out if you're interested in serving on that, and that is available on our website. The I-69 Trade Corridor is a collaborative effort by businesses and local government, all the way from Chaiwase County through Genesee, Lapeer, and St. Clair Counties, to market the area's highway, railroad, airport, and so forth. So it is something that can help your business grow, it can help our community grow. So if you have an interest in that area, please check that out on our website. I do have a few possible grants that are available that came to me by email, and so I want to just hand those out here to council. If you guys would take a few minutes and look these over when you have time, and just see if you have any ideas of projects that you would like to maybe use these for. I've talked to Megan about them, and she's looking at them as well. One is a community, to benefit the community through arts or music. This other one, which is a consumers' energy pitch competition, is something the Parks Committee is looking at using to hopefully revitalize the ball fields. So if you want to just look at those things, if you have any, any thoughts for other projects that that could be used for, just let me know, or let Megan know. And my last thing I just want to talk about briefly is that I have met with our department heads, have seen their projected budgets for our next fiscal year, and I'd like to call a special meeting of the council and department heads to preview those proposals. And wondering if April the 6th, which is our first meeting, council meeting of April, but to meet prior to the meeting about 5:30. We can call it for that day, but if not, everybody can be here, it doesn't work very well. So if you can check your calendars at home, let me know if you can't be here. If I don't hear from you, I'll assume you can be here. So we would just go right from a 5:30 budget meeting for about an hour into our council meeting at 7:00. Okay? That's everything I have. Committee reports.
Excuse me, just a quick update from the ordinance committee. We did have our last meeting on March the 9th, and we're continuing to work on some zoning ordinance, potential revisions in the area of pets and animals. And we also will have later on the agenda this evening, some other things that we've been working on, so we'll touch on those a little bit later. Our next ordinance committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 13th, at 10:00 a.m. here in council chambers, so we'll continue our, our work on ordinance improvements and clarifications. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any other committees have reports? Then we'll move on to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that be authorized.
Second. We have a motion from Mindy, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any old business, so we'll move into new business with your possible acceptance of the resignation of Mr. Bunning. Devin did read his resignation letter.
I move that we accept with regret the resignation of Leon Bunning as electrical inspector and extend our appreciation for his service.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Our building inspector, Rob Keigho, asked if we would prepare just a recognition of Leon's service, and so Devin put this together. Upon your retirement, City of Perry, Mayor and Council present this certificate to Leon Bunning and wishes to express its sincere thanks and gratitude for your nearly 20 years of dedicated service as electrical inspector to our community. We wish you good health, happiness, continued success in your retirement. And we gave the one with the pretty gold seal on it to Rob to give to Leon. We do have recommendation from Rob Keigho as to an appointment of John Keach, who is a local electrician. We have been recommended to hire him as our electrical inspector for the city of Perry. I believe you all got a resume concerning his work, and if we have any discussion, if not, we need a motion.
I move that we approve the mayor's appointment of John Keach under the direction of the city's building inspector and authorize mayor and clerk to sign agreement between the city and the electrical inspector.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
I believe John has done a few already for the city, helping out Leon and Rob.
Okay, very good. Moving then on to possible approval of amendment to purchasing policy. This is the city's purchasing policy, and the, I can't, was it the Finance Committee that made these changes, or?
The ordinance.
Was it? Yeah. Which is the same, so, anyway. Do you, do you want to address those amendments, Larry, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Basically, just to back up for a second, this stems from the fact that we did successfully have a voter agreement to make a minor change in our charter at the last election that allowed for us to change some things within our purchasing policy, and that's really what this stems from, is having had that, that change should take place in the charter between the ordinance committee as well as the, the staff. I think that there's been an effort to streamline and bring the amounts, dollar amounts up to current economics, if you will, compared to where they were previously. Comments, questions?
Can't put Finance Committee to an ordinance committee, knowing I know why she said that.
I move that we approve the amendment to the purchasing policy as presented by the ordinance committee.
Second. Was that second from Steve?
Yes.
Okay. We have the motion from Mindy, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we have a few zoning ordinances that have been through the first reading. We just need to go now 30 days after that through the formality of adopting those. Ordinance number 371. Does anybody have any comments or questions concerning that?
I'll just comment that basically, this, again, this one that came out of the ordinance committee, and in large part, there were a few minor changes, but it primarily is intended to move our requirements around driveways and sidewalks from our codified ordinance to have it reside with the zoning ordinance activities where most of our other things like fencing, et cetera, currently reside. I move that zoning ordinance number 371 regarding section 3.34 driveways and sidewalks, which was read at the March 2nd, 2023 council meeting be adopted.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on then to ordinance repeal number 372.
Fundamentally, now that we just approved the zoning ordinance, now we, this cancels the fact that we no longer will have the fact that we no longer will have the sidewalks and driveways portion in our codified ordinance. I move that ordinance number 372 regarding repeal of section 1020.01, which was read at the March 2nd, 2023 council meeting be adopted.
Second. And we have a motion from Larry, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And then possible adoption of ordinance amendment number 375.
Okay, one more concerning sidewalks. So just to clarify for everyone, and that is that basically we're amending that section to take the specifications around sidewalks in new developed lots out and putting it in the zoning ordinance, but still require that all newly developed lots will have sidewalks meeting the requirements that we have in the zoning ordinance. I move that ordinance number 375 regarding section 124605 sidewalks, and which was read at the March 2nd, 2023 council meeting be adopted.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We can now move into the possible approval of a trash slash recycling proposal. We did receive two proposals, which you all got to review. Is there any discussion regarding the proposals received?
I have a question about the recycling. It doesn't tell me what. I know it's an extra fee, but it doesn't say what they recycle, so I can maybe choose to opt out or opt in.
There isn't really any opt... Oh, you mean for the city to opt out or in. Granger representative, whose name I forgot, can you?
Scott Truman.
Scott, can you speak to that for your company as far as what it would be included in recycling?
So recycling materials are basically plastic, paper, cardboard, glass. It has to meet the specific plastic requirements from it.
Do you know what those are, like number two, number five?
They're number one through seven are the plastics that are allowed to be put into recycling.
But you give one bin, so where do you separate those?
One bin, so it's single stream collection at the street side for it, and then we take our recycling to a MRF, municipal recycling facility that is in Lansing. And then it's sorted there, and then it's shipped off to the other mill.
So you don't have to sort it at home?
No, you just rinse out plastic, you know, rinse out the tin, things like that. Try to keep contamination to a minimal measure.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
Jill, can you speak to that for your company?
Waste management. Yes, basically what he said, but I will add that anyone who has bracket papers that they want to throw in recycling tonight, because it's been a rough day for March Madness, you can throw them all in there as well. But yeah, and you would get a 96 gallon, it's all single stream, just toss it all in there, and then it's sorted at the mall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, other than I was gonna, there's no way one, like if I want to do it, I can't do it unless everyone does.
That's right. It's all in, just like the assessment, it's everybody or nobody.
Perfect customer, worth $5 to drive to Lansing.
I know right now, excuse me, I know right now in the city, everybody has their Granger cart, but quite often in addition to that, they have additional bags because of either they didn't compress what was in the cart, or they just had a high volume of trash. It looks like in going through this, that today, I believe Granger picks that up as a normal course of business. In the future, looking at, that would be a plus charge to the city above and beyond the hard cart. Is that correct?
The Granger agreement actually offers plus three bags. It's additional beyond the three bags.
Plus three bags would be included along with the cart?
Yes.
And what's the situation for waste management then, Jill?
So W1 asked that it's all contained in the cart. We do offer the option to get a second cart. You have two proposals in front of you. One is a cart plus one, so it can be a bag, a bulk, something outside. The second one is just cart contents only, and then bulk is handled where the resident would call in if they have extra bags, a bulk item, and then they would... It depends on the item, there's a charge for it. So there's two options in front of you.
With waste management, there's an option one, which is cart contents plus one side, outside of the cart, and an option two, cart contents only. So just notice that there's two options there. I think that's what she's referring to.
So the plus one outside the cart would be one 30 gallon bag or whatever.
Yeah.
How would you keep track if someone has more than one?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
So what would happen is the driver would take the cart plus the one, sticker what's out with an 800 number that, hey, you've exceeded the limit, call us to schedule a pickup.
Make arrangements to make that. So then I would just take it back in my garage and put it on next week.
There you go. And if you consistently, if we notice a resident consistently has more than the one bag out, we would reach out to that resident and say, hey, you know, you probably need a second cart, so let's get one of these delivered to you.
Then what is the cost for a second cart?
So we usually pay or charge it once a year, because it's like 48 bucks a year for a second cart, and it's easier for residents to just pay it once rather than have to pay until for four bucks a month.
So it wouldn't change the monthly unit fee? You would add that on to my...
So the resident would actually, it'd be outside of the city contract.
Okay.
So the resident would contract.
They would have to, they would contract directly with you.
Yep.
I need five, and it'd be those, whatever, okay.
Yeah.
And then one of the, excuse me, once again, one of the things that the city has historically done is had a cleanup week that has been supported by Granger. We do that right after our citywide, our community-wide garage sale activity. How do these proposals change or impact that past practice?
Yes.
Either one.
Okay, so we've included 12 30-yard roll-offs in our proposal, and you can use those all at once, you can use one every month, but we would handle the cleanup with the roll-off containers rather than a curbside. And I know that's a change for residents. We would help communicate that change, we would help with signage on the containers. That instructs residents on how this is what this is for, use this to dispose of this, and we will place them when you want them, where you want them. We just need 24 to 48 hours notice.
Okay, so you'd place spot one someplace in the city that people would just have to bring their items to it by some fashion?
And then also, they could, residents do have the option of calling us and saying, hey, I have three items, let me just prepay for them, and a ticket gets put in to have it picked up.
But the large item, Jill, if I recall from discussion and reading here, the weekly pickup for the cart, what they pay for that also includes what could be one large item at that point?
Yep, option one, I believe, yes.
It just includes it.
Yep.
So there could be ongoing stuff.
Yes.
As opposed to just once.
Yep.
And Scott, did you want to explain, answer Larry's question?
Sure. Granger has done a curbside collection for a long time, the decades that our relationship has existed. We are still willing to offer that, we are willing to offer that at a rate for our truck to come here for it. There's, the relationships went on so long that we'd actually managed that at no additional cost for a very long time. We're just looking to recoup our costs and expense of going curbside for it. We recognize that's an additional expense, but we also recognize the challenges of resident having to take it to a site location, whether or not they have the means to. And as your DPW's already impacted by moving some bulk items, there might be more of an impact on them as well. But we are willing to continue doing the curbside collection on your collection day as we have done.
At the cost that's described in the literature.
Yes.
You had shared with us when we met with you that the curbside pickup last year, which was free to our residents.
Yeah.
That one time, actually cost Granger in the neighborhood of $10,000.
Yeah, I will admit, I did find out on Wednesday, as we're gonna do a review over some stuff, there was an error on my yardage that I collected.
Oh, okay.
So it would have been significantly less now that it caused, but it was, that's our responsibility for having that data the way we did. So we're delighted to do the collection.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Kevin, you may not be able to answer this, because you've only been here for a short period of time. How often have we had to go around and pick up stuff? The next day or the next week, when we had special pickup stuff?
For Clinical Week, it's been my understanding that there's been a few items here and there that the DPWs had to go back after they didn't get it out in time, or it was missed, and the DPW was responsible for cleaning that up. I guess there's quite a few mattresses last year that took some manpower and some time to clean up. But I think when we put it out there as a community cleanup and we offer people that service, that, you know, we have some responsibility to move those items for those people.
Kevin and Devin and I met with each company regarding their proposals, and Kevin has put together a report that he would like to offer to council. Kevin?
The request for proposal that the City of Perry posted to the city website generated two proposals from competing companies for weekly trash collection and removal. Devin has included the breakdown sheet, which you all have reviewed. Our recommendation to you as council is based on the best service for the best price that the city can provide to its residents at this time, based on the information we were given per our request. My recommendation is a three-year contract with waste management for trash collection only, including a 96 gallon cart and cart contents and one outside item at the rate of $12.20 per unit with the annual 6% increase. Approval of the contract would be subject to review by the city attorney. I think other options would increase costs too quickly and put a burden on our residents. There was no options presented that reduced cost to residents. All options that were presented were considered, and if any of you have any questions, comments, or any discussion for me, I might be able to break it down a little bit.
Do we look, Kevin, is there any impact right now? We have, as you know, a line item, like the water bill agreement was built for people.
Mm-hmm.
Do we expect as a result of either of these that that number will change in the near future?
It will. Effective as soon as the new contract is in place, they're currently paying, I believe it's 840 per household per month for trash collection. That would go up to the $12.20 per household. If we added the recycling, it would go up an additional $5.25 per unit for waste management or...
806.
806 for...
Okay. We just pass through to the residents exactly what?
Yes.
We're paying.
Did you ask Granger, since they're already established here and have all the cans, to match the waste management price? Sorry for that over there, but that's who I am, ask these guys to be in the Sessa meetings.
Yeah, we didn't negotiate with anybody. We based the discussions on their proposals.
We figured that they brought us their best price, and, you know, that everyone had an opportunity in the open market to bring us what they feel like they're comfortable of providing the service for. I think that's the, it was a sealed bid.
Yes.
So, you know, we did the bid opening, and I believe that that's why, that's how the process is.
Yep.
If I may, your RFP does clearly say that you are allowed to reject or accept any of the bids as you so choose, or negotiate if you would choose as well. If you were open to having a discussion about rates, Granger would be open to having that discussion as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I personally am offended by that. Let me just say that right out loud. You came to us and said, our contract's gonna expire, but if you'll sign with us now, we'll give you a great deal. If you open the bids, who knows what you'll get? We've had service from Granger for a long, long time, and I was offended personally by that attitude. But we asked for bids, we took bids, we had sealed bids, and we looked at them, we tore them apart, looked at the service, looked at the price, and Kevin has made recommendation based on that.
I apologize for finding the beat of your office.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion, questions, motions? We are under the gun on this one because our service with Granger is gonna expire soon. They were kind enough to extend it through this process, but we need to make a decision.
I move that we approve the trash recycling proposal from waste management and select trash only per unit at $12.20 with a three-year contract and a 6% annual increase pending city attorney's review and approval of the contract, and then authorize the mayor to sign the attorney-approved contract.
Second. We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you both, Scott and Jill, for your proposals, and thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
If I may just say, the Granger Way Service is considered an honor and privilege to take care of this city, as we have locally for many, many years in the surrounding communities. I again apologize if I found it, it was not my intention. I hope that we'll have an opportunity to talk about business in three years.
I'm sure we will.
And I wish you good luck on your transition.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I think they're gonna deliver them. Jill, could I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
About the new carts? How does that happen?
Want to come up to the table there?
Yes, thank you.
You can have the phone in if you'd like.
Let too.
You just made it so much better.
Yes, we're gonna...
Oh, yeah.
We don't want to run it up, I just wanted...
Mayor noticed it too, yeah.
Jill, first of all, there's a typo on the date. It's a date, it says 2024.
Right here at the top.
And it's obviously that.
Oh, 2024. All right, well...
We'll have a lot of garbage stacked up.
So if anyone manually correct that and initial that?
Yes.
That's sufficient if it's coming from you, and then we'll ask the mayor to sign.
Beautiful. I did get confirmation that this is sufficient to get the cart order placed.
Okay, so to report to council what she's speaking of, in order to transition, she needed the authority of council saying yes, that you agree with the proposal, enough for the transition to happen. Our next step, though, is to negotiate a true contract that's gonna go to the city attorney to be agreed upon between the city and waste management. So that's what this is, is just saying, just like the IT service, you guys approved the proposal, but we... the proposal, but we actually had an agreement where these two proposals did not have agreements, and so this is how we're handling it, so nothing is delayed. Did I make sense on that?
It'll be seen in the trash collection.
That's what...
How are we doing that? We get a green one and they take the brown one? I'm assuming yours are still green, I don't know.
Yes.
They're gonna drop mine.
Well, the one thing...
As a citizen, I'm curious.
The one thing I talked to Jill about, and that will be part of it, I would assume we would follow up and be talking with you, Jill, is that I asked, "Are you gonna help us communicate to all the residents on the transition and make sure?" One of the things Jill asked is, is if they couldn't make it on the schedule, would it be all right to start with a bag until they did get all the carts out? But she made us feel quite confident that, you know, that they're gonna understand and know what is happening and when they're coming in and how to use them. And I assume with the literature, it'll be, any questions, the consumers or residents of City of Perry will be able to call Waste Management. The complaints, and that is another difference from before. Now, Granger was going to switch that for us, but pretty much your, I mean, other than your initial 1220 that's gonna be added on to your utility bill, any questions, problems, complaints, you are now gonna directly talk to Waste Management. So that's gonna be a difference that Shirley's gonna appreciate.
Well, it should be that way, yeah.
Well, we did it for years, and so it's just been part of the job.
Right, but it was, I can understand taking that off Shirley's place, and she's gotta call, and then that's...
It worked, but, yeah, it will be smoother, and I think the residents will appreciate it too.
I really think we, as a council or the city, need to have a communicative, in addition to the logistics from Waste Management that says we're gonna go from 840 to 1220.
That is, that is a formal resolution, so that will be on your April meeting. That is, that is not done lightly. That's like your water and sewer. It's a formal resolution that goes through.
So in order to, so we work with Cascade, who's our cart company. They make the carts, they get a crew, they assemble them, and they deliver them. What they need, and I don't need it right this second, but soon, is an Excel spreadsheet of addresses. And if there's any map of the city that shows all the streets, if there's anything like that, they will really appreciate that.
Devin will see that you got that.
Sorry, yeah, I'm making notes, and we'll make a communication.
Yeah, you and I are gonna talk a lot over these next...
Okay. And I might delegate, I mean, getting this information, I'll help her with what resources I have, but Shirley is usually the head that gets all of the questions or concerns, so I'm going to, she's either gonna be sitting beside me or talking directly to you.
Perfect.
Okay?
All right, that's great. So I need to initial... The signed proposal, I need to initial that date, right?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead and initial it. I'm gonna make a copy of it?
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you going through all of this tonight. We appreciate you being here to answer questions.
This made my day a whole lot better.
I don't know if anyone... This is my first year doing a bracket. Never do.
Nope.
Everything's hot today, so...
I bet you didn't pick Furman.
I sure didn't, no.
Oh, even knew it existed. Arizona now is out.
Anybody can read anybody. I'm sorry.
Why they play the game?
I mean, what was it, last year or two years ago, number 16 seed went almost, I think, to the lead eight?
My husband's filming his end after the fact.
Just give it to me if you wanna waste your money. I'll have my own bracket, just give it to me.
Never again. Thank you. I appreciate everything you've done. And I know it was a time crunch, so I just wanna thank everybody for getting it out and the opportunity to submit a proposal. I'm very excited. We will work through it together. Change is hard, right? But we will make sure it's as seamless as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for me? That'll be good, all right? Have a great night.
Thanks.
Be safe out there, excuse me.
Okay, next on the agenda, the Castle approval McQueen House curb and sidewalk repairs. Terry Shanty, who is a member of the Historical Society, the Terry Historical Society, came in and met with me a couple of weeks ago, and we just talked about how wonderful the McQueen House looks and all the improvements they've made. But then, at the end of the hour of our meeting, she said, "Gee, is there anything that the city can do to correct the mud pit that happens on the east shoulder of Madison Street, on the east side of the McQueen House, where people park? Because they get out and their feet get muddy, and then if they're gonna come in the house, their feet are muddy and it makes a mess." And I do remember going there last year and finding that to be the case, once when I was going to the McQueen House, and once when I was going to the church across the street. So it is, it's terrible. And I had talked to John Souter at that time, who was our superintendent, a year ago, and they did go over and graded and did some temporary, but it just, it needs to be, if I'm correct in understanding what Kevin told me, it needs to be dug down and prepped and asphalted over to correct. Is that in a nutshell, Kevin, do you think?
Yeah.
And you did get, I believe anyway, an estimate that Smith Paving put together for that, and then also, as I was walking then, it did rinse the mud off my shoes, because I had to walk through this much water where the sidewalk teased to go up to the door, so it did rinse my shoes off, but then my feet were still in the way. So I asked Kevin about fixing that sidewalk too, and so they put together an estimate, I believe you have that as well. They will raise that sidewalk up, because it's just really low, so it just pools there. So it's $2,100 for the sidewalk, $3,525 for the shoulder.
If you see in your motion, the Smith paving amount is higher than what the mayor said, because I asked to be included with that total, the five yards of the delivered, and it's 25 yards. So that's been calculated in, and that's why it's at $3,650. It's included in the $3,525 plus the five yards needed.
So there's two motions there, one for the shoulder and one for the sidewalk.
I'm assuming the sidewalk is to go from, I call it city street sidewalk, up to the house?
Well, where the low spot is, is right where that meets. It's the city sidewalk that dips down like this, and then the sidewalk to the house. Do you remember, Kevin, what had to be raised?
If you don't mind, though.
Yeah, I don't mind at all. It's way better than me trying to explain it with my comments.
The sidewalk improvements, we were looking to raise the entire sidewalk around both street sides of the building, four inches. We were gonna pour over the existing sidewalks, regrade everything, slope it away so that the water can flow away from the walkway area. We would pave 150 feet with the paving proposal along Madison Street side with a designated walkway to the sidewalk. We should be able to eliminate the step on the front part of the building, on the first street side, make it more seamless coming up to the building. And then the five yards of 21A aggregate material would go on the first street side shoulder, so there would be additional parking there.
Okay.
And then the Smith, Santa Gra, or the Smith paving proposal included the prep and compaction before the asphalt goes on, and then that's two lifts of asphalt, the base coat and the top coat. And then we would, we would stripe it and do the grading and restoration work, the DPW department.
Does that answer your question? Other questions, comments, discussion?
I've got some concerns about the sidewalk portion, given the state of our sidewalks around the rest of the city. I'm concerned that if we spend city resources, I understand the issue, but we probably got that same issue in multiple locations around the city.
Yeah, and I bet we do. The concern that I have is that the city owns that house, that it is a public house, that people are coming in and out of it, and if they trip, it's gonna be the city that they sue for their injuries.
How about next to my house, where I have two walls?
That's up to you.
And that's not my sidewalk. It's the city sidewalk.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. I don't own that sidewalk.
Yes, you do.
No, I do not. I do not own that sidewalk. I'm responsible to clear it, but it's not my sidewalk to repair or make sure it's safe, other than snow and ice. That's it. I don't own that sidewalk. I don't, I don't own the property. My property's stopped before the sidewalk. I have to pay taxes on it and maintain it, but I don't own it.
You and I could have a discussion about that.
I know, it's true.
I know it's not. It's absolutely not.
Who's responsible for repairing that sidewalk? Anywhere, not just my house. I'm just waiting, 'cause I have a hole in my sidewalk. I'm just gonna bring it up, because whenever I bring it up, it's easy for me to say, "I look out the window and look at my..." Who's responsible for repairing that? The homeowner or the city?
I truly can't answer that question. You said, "I don't, I only own to the sidewalk."
No, I don't own to the sidewalk, I'm sure it's much.
You own to the middle of the street.
No, I do not. I do not. Look at my plot plan. Where my, you know my house. That old fence, that is my property line.
Yeah.
That is the survey property line. I do not own beyond that, period. None. I have to maintain it, and I don't own it at all. And I don't know where any other people's property lines met, meet at the sidewalks. The city's responsible for those sidewalks. I drove by the McQueen House after I saw this was on the agenda. I don't see anything wrong with those sidewalks. I can walk around other sidewalks on that subdivision, which I have with dogs, and they're in a lot better, worse shape than that. And I don't see spending the money on it.
Did you look at it after we had rain or snowmelt?
No, but I have the same problem. I see it everywhere. I can, I walk my dog all the time, or Jennifer does, one of us. There's sidewalks all over the city that you have to walk through water. Not that it's half the people don't saw the sidewalks, but there's lots of other areas. And I don't see us spending the money. Is the Historical Society going to contribute to anything of this?
No.
Why not?
Because they're responsible for the inside out of the house, for the historic, for the museum area inside the house. The city owns the building and is responsible for the maintenance of the building. If the Historical Society has money to contribute to that, sometimes they have done that, but they're not responsible for that.
I think, I think there's other sidewalks in much more need of repair than the McQueen House. In the past, the superintendent of DPW used to do an annual sidewalk inspection, and if there was flags that needed to be replaced, the city would assess that cost to the homeowner. They would pay a portion, but assess a portion to the homeowner. If there are trip hazards or tributes busting up the...
I've talked with John a little bit about sidewalks in the community, and there is money budgeted for capital improvements that include sidewalks. We have to repair so many, we have to spend so much money on non-motorized, non-motorized traffic areas, such as walking paths and sidewalks for, to maintain our status with NDOT. So we are looking into what sidewalks need to be replaced and looking at what we have to do throughout the city as far as improvements with sidewalks throughout the community. I don't know how long that's gonna take, how much we're gonna be able to replace with the money that we have budgeted. I was asked to get information for this McQueen House project, and that's what I got the information that was requested.
Yeah, he got the information based on my request after I met with Terry.
I'm perfectly, yeah, I'm perfectly fine with the idea that says any of the sidewalk that goes from our city side, street side sidewalk up to the house is the responsibility, I think, of the city, as it would be with any resident. I'm concerned that if we start doing major improvements around the city, street side sidewalk, we're gonna have a lot of folks saying, "What about my spot? What about my spot?", etc. That's my concern.
Well, and as Steve said, traditionally, when sidewalks are repaired, a portion of that, if not all of it, is assessed. When a new sidewalk was put in, again, I don't know recently, but I remember historically that it was assessed to the homeowner. So...
Does that, does that pertain to the street work as well?
No, well...
The homeowners?
Not, not for that type of street work, no. No. It wouldn't be assessed to the homeowner. That would be a city thing, because it's the city street.
I would like to see us take a little bit more holistic approach to the size street side sidewalk portion, if you will, and see how it fits with other opportunities around the city. I mean, that's just, that's just me.
If there's any information specifically that you would like to request, we can look into whatever you'd like. I just need to...
I'm just thinking in terms, and I'm open to suggestions from the rest of the council members, it's not just me.
Sure.
But that we say, "What are the big areas for the city as regards improvements to our sidewalks within the city?" And that's not from, you know, the street side sidewalk up to the house, that clearly is a homeowner's responsibility. It would be our McQueen House's responsibility to take care of that. Just my thought.
It's been my experience in some places where the sidewalk was so bad that they went to the homeowners and made sure they agreed and just took the sidewalks right out.
And didn't replace them, they just took them out?
But they, they let the residents have a say before they did it.
Yeah, we have a lot of sidewalk, I shouldn't say so, we have a lot of properties without sidewalks. A lot.
Yeah, we do.
So if we're gonna be looking at, in my opinion, if we're gonna be looking at new sidewalks, repairs one thing, but new sidewalks and things, we should look at that before we do, because there's a problem. I understand, but I don't know, it's just...
My whole reason for bringing it up, I'm just concerned that are we setting a precedent that we're gonna be, yeah, looking at a lot of other sidewalk repairs around the city?
My initial request to Kevin was to see what they could do to eliminate the mud there along that parking area, and to eliminate the low spot where the sidewalk teased to go into the house. That's all I asked for. I didn't ask for them to go around the building and do other stuff on the other side of the street. I think we could ask Kevin to amend this estimate to those areas only, just to raise that one spot where it is four inches deep when you walk through it, and to eliminate the mud hole on the Madison Street side of the building, and then bring that new estimate back to the next meeting. Would that be acceptable, council? And then we can revisit this?
Can I, can I ask something? Is the con, is the sidewalk...
Is the con, is the sidewalk tore up, like, I mean, missing chunks and broken?
The majority of the sidewalk is in good, good standard. The low spots that she's referring to was from street paving, where they raised the street level, and then they kind of put some asphalt down towards the sidewalk, which created a low spot for the water to sit.
So, so here, this is just an option, and I'm just bringing it up, I don't know how the council feels. What about having a bid come in for spray foam to lift the, lift the sidewalk back up?
I don't know what's underneath the asphalt. We'd have to tear it up to even get it, do an inspection on it, see if it's, if it's liftable, but I mean, we can look at, I can have somebody come out and look at that and see what, if they're willing to, you know...
It's just, it's just a thing that I wanted to...
It's gotta be less expensive to digitally lift them, wouldn't it?
But my, what I'm saying is, I don't know what's underneath the asphalt, because you can't see if there's concrete or what kind of shape it's in, or if it's broken, or why they painted over it, I don't know. So we'd have to tear it up and just make it unusable for a while, while we investigate that, and then we'd have to repair it either with patch or pavement of some kind, or replace that flag.
I just thought I'd bring it up, because I've seen it done before.
Definitely other options we can look into, you know, we can, instead of paving the Madison Street side, we could put gravel in there. I just feel like, over time, gravel will start to grow grass and look unmaintained. It will cause issues for mowing and snow plowing, getting peeled up and thrown out of the grass, which we have to bring it back every year. The mayor was asking me what we could do. That was my best recommendation to completely make it maintenance-free, the best appearance, and fix all the issues that she requested me to look into. But there's definitely other options that we can look into.
My bigger concern, just to be clear, was not the Madison side getting the mud along there. My question really targeted at the sidewalk portion of this.
Sure. To just correct the area, that's the problem, and not the...
Too far-reaching until we, yeah, and then I think if we want as a council to decide to get a more far-reaching understanding at least of what the state of our sidewalks are, I know we thought previously, you know, tried to look for some grant money, except for, it hasn't happened yet, but...
We did not get that money that we asked for for sidewalks. It doesn't mean we can't apply for it again.
Right, right.
We certainly can, but we did not get that, right? Okay, well, Kevin, I guess if you understand what we're asking you to do, are you, any questions about what we would like you to do and bring back to us next meeting?
No, I think I can take a look at what's there and, you know, shrink the numbers down and figure out. So, you know, just the sidewalk portion, instead of replacing all of it, we're looking at repairing the low spots only and regrading as necessary for drainage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will do no action taken on this and bring it back to the agenda next month. Any further discussion on that? Moving to the next item, discussion approval to signing the letter to Congress to act on rail safety. You all got a copy of this that came by email, asking us to sign electronically in support of the rail safety proposal. So I didn't want to just do that or not do it, I wanted you to make that decision, so who you are.
I'm in agreement.
Motion, I move that we direct the mayor to sign the letter to Congress regarding the city's rail safety system.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the discussion to reorganize the parks committee. As you all know, we have always, well, as best as I can recall, had three council members on the park committee, just like we have three council members on all our committees. And the park committee has one city resident also on that committee. He has been there since time began. So Mr. Dunn is there. But we would also like to add the city treasurer to that committee. And that is what this is all about. What's your thoughts on that discussion?
That makes sense.
Even before I was on council, I went to the parks committee a couple times. Joanne was there, so I think she...
Joanne wasn't working for you the way Megan is, so I'd like to continue to...
No, 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 I'm just saying, yeah, but I think she did, she may have done more for...
I'd like to continue to have you have a full-time person working for you.
Oh, I, I have no issue with it. I think it's a great idea, I just didn't know what we had to do. It was kind of like, I thought it was a given. That's my perception of that.
We can be requested to go there, but it's being so successful, let's, let's make it part of that committee so that as this changes, it'll be followed.
It's already in there.
It's already in there. That is, obviously, I was like, Mayor, let's, let's make this real, this is...
Yeah, I, I didn't even know it wasn't, so, I'll, I'm there, uh, where am I at here?
I don't have a motion for it. Mayor can create and change committees, so you can make your own motion or leave it as is.
You can all just give me a nod to add the treasurer to the committee and I'll do it. Yes, yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Make it official.
Now we move into some more ordinance work. Possible first reading of amendment number 373 regarding 612.04, dogs. Larry, do you have any comment on that?
Sure, I've got a little, excuse me once again, I've got a little background. We have previously talked about some modifications to our noise ordinance that we have passed and updated. In doing that, we realized that we wanted to make a, well, it started with what was gonna be a very minor change to this dog ordinance, and fundamentally, I'll get to it as we go through and read it, it was to, previously had said that this ordinance was the responsibility of the dog owner in all cases. We're proposing that we change that to if someone has a dog in their care, they don't have to be the owner, they're still responsible. For example, if you were on vacation for a month and had someone house-sitting and taking care of your dog, and there was a barking issue, that dog is in their care and therefore they have the same ordinance compliance responsibilities as the owner would have. And we just extended that to the other points in this ordinance to be consistent. Comments, questions? I move that section 612.04 regarding dogs, ordinance number 373 be amended, which reads as follows and placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains Perry City Code section 612.04B5 as amended as follows. 612.04 Dogs B. Running at large, peace disturbances, no person shall allow a dog in their care to be in violation of any of the following restrictions. One, no person shall permit any vicious dog which he or she is caring for to be unconfined unless securely muzzled and led by a leash. A dog which has bitten a person or domestic animal without molestation, or which by its actions gives indication it may be liable to bite a person or domestic animal without molestation, shall be deemed vicious. Two, no person who has a female dog in their care shall permit or allow such female dog to go beyond the premises of the caregiver when such dog is in heat. Three, no person who is, has a, caring for a dog shall permit it to be unconfined unless reasonable control of a person. Four, no person who is caring for a dog shall permit it to be unconfined at any time unless licensed as required by law and wearing its license tag and evidence of rabies immunization. Five, no person shall allow, allow a dog in their care which by loud, frequent, or habitual barking, yelping, or howling causes annoyance to the people of the neighborhood. Reference 67003J, which was the noise ordinance I spoke of. This ordinance will take effect 30 days from date of publication.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We move to our next item, which is the possible first reading of ordinance amendment number 376 regarding 1444.01 house numbering.
I can go ahead and get some background if somebody else wants to take your crap helping with reading it. I'll read it. Fundamentally, our current ordinance is very prescriptive in terms of, to be in compliance, how everyone's house has to be numbered from a resident's perspective. It basically defines it has to be so large, and it's to be adjacent to the front entryway, et cetera, et cetera. And so what we've attempted to do with this, these proposed changes, would be to allow some other options for the residents. Number one being that the real key is that we want to make certain from a safety perspective, fire EMS, et cetera, that there's nobody guessing as to where somebody lives if they've got a call. So it really tries to say, there's a number of options that serve that purpose without being prescriptive to the fact that it has to be exactly this size, exactly this location. So that's what's driven behind this suggested change. Questions?
I move that we amend section 1444.01 and repeal and substitute 144.99 regarding house numbering, ordinance number 376, which reads as follows and be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains Perry City Code section 14444.01 is amended and substituted as follows. 1444.01 numbering required, placement and specifications. A, all buildings in the city shall bear a distinctive street number at or near the front entrance of the premises. See optional locations in C. In accordance with and as designated upon, the street plan map on file in the office of the city clerk. B, the owners and occupants of all buildings in the city shall cause the correct numbers to be placed there on, in accordance with the street plan map. Such numbers shall be not less than two inches wide and four inches high. C's size exception in C below. And shall be of contrasting colors to the building. Mowing surface facing the street and in such position as to be plainly visible from the adjacent street. C, acceptable street number locations are: near the front entrance of the premises facing the street; on or near the residence mailbox facing the street; or if on the side of the mailbox or post, must be on both sides, only if single mailbox on the same side of the street and in front of premises. Numbers shall be not less than one and a half inches wide and two inches high; in ornamental yard accessory facing the street in front of the premises. Numbers must be clearly visible from the adjacent street at all times of the year. Section 1444.99 is hereby repealed, and below says section 1444.99 is substituted in its place and stead. Section 1444.99 penalty. See section 202.99 for general code penalty if no specific penalty is provided. This ordinance shall take effect 30 days from date of publication.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So both of these that came up for first readings will be on the agenda for our next meeting for possible approval. Any other business that may come before council at this time? Anyone here for public comment that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to council discussion and observation, and I would just like to thank Steve for filling in at the last meeting. Thank you for running the lead up for me. Any other council discussion or observation? Any agenda items for the next meeting other than those we've already mentioned? Meeting's adjourned, 8:43.